Maplewood City Council meeting to order on Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and fifty-four. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of Pickapoo, Osage, Miami, Yurkoi, and great Sioux Nation people. We'd rather join you and say we like allegiance.
I believe allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Kentucky. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Traxler will call the meeting.
Here, Councilmember Bockingham, here, Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Here, Mayor McNapper.
Here.
Councilmember Maddox.
Here.
Councilmember Page, here. Mayor McNapper, on this present.
Thank you, Ms. Get I, item number five. Mr. Traxler, item number six.
Full of the county's agenda.
May I have a motion?
So, one second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Traxler, item number seven.
Public hearing to hear citizen comments regarding the estimated reallocation of sixty-four thousand dollars of community development block grant funds for year twenty twenty-two.
At this time, the public is invited to provide comment. If you are joining us online, please raise your hand, and Swetha Khan will call upon me. You are in the chambers with us, please step to the podium. And if you're going to use the microphone, you'll need to press the button in power zone. All right, Mr. Traxler, item number eight.
Public hearing to hear citizen comments regarding the request by the Rebel Kitchen for a conditional new permit operating restaurant to drive through at seventy-five twenty Manchester Road.
Again, the public is invited to provide comment at this time, either via Zoom or if you are with us in your chambers. Mr. Traxler, item number nine, please.
Public hearing to hear citizen comments regarding a request by VR Wholesale International Car Sale and Repair for a conditional new permit. Continue the existing used car sales and all the repair operations at twenty-eight hundred South Big Ben Boulevard and seventy-four eighty-eight eleven.
Again, the public is invited at this time to provide comment, either via Zoom or in person in the chambers. Mr. Traxler, item number ten.
Public forum.
At this time, the public is invited to provide any comment they would like. Please step to the podium, if you're joining us in the council chambers, and please raise your hand if you're joining us via Zoom. All right, for comments, in person, and actually on Zoom too, please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes to provide comment.
Thank you, my name is Sadie Phillips, seventy-six thirty-nine, Maryport. Once again, if the comments are a little bit lengthy, I'm gonna go ahead and read them to you, and I've got a copy as well for our Mr. Traxler, our at baby city clerk tonight. On December twelfth, Councilmember Corral asked the community be more involved with and directly communicative with the council. While motioning to the packed room, he stated, "This room right here is what we wish we had every council meeting. Your input is what we desire." This was something that many of us appreciated and took to heart. In an effort to honor that request and create open dialogue between elected officials and their constituency, several people began asking questions directly to the council during a public forum. With an understanding that not all questions can be answered immediately, these questions were written down and submitted to the city clerk. I will now reiterate the questions that are still waiting on answers. Asked by Eliza Corral on one nine twenty-four. During the December twelfth council session, Councilmember Bockingham stated that the salary for the new city manager was still being negotiated. But we have since learned that the contract was signed by us with the Congress that same day and by Mayor McNapper the following day. Can council please clarify for us and the viewers at home when exactly the salary for the new city manager was decided? Second question, asked by Marie Councilwoman Long, also on January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. As a community that embrace diversity, equity, and inclusion, how did the city manager search employ these values? Due to the limited nature and scope of the search, it appears that an entire population of individuals were left out of this potential opportunity, and it's very likely that some of them are minorities. Finally, asked by myself, also on January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Missouri state law makes clear the conditions under which closed meetings and closed records are authorized for use by municipal government. Let me quote from section six-ten dot zero-two-one of the Missouri revised statutes. "A public governmental body is authorized to close meetings, records, and votes to the extent that they relate to," et cetera. I'm not gonna reread that over again. Translated into plain English, what that meant was Missouri state law says that the course of course discussion of potential or ongoing litigation between the city and its attorneys is protected by closed session. However, after the dust settles, the public has a legal right to know what their government is doing with their taxes. With that said, are you now ready to tell citizens why a payout of one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars was provided to the former city manager Michael Reese upon his exit? In addition, what legal costs were incurred in reaching this one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar settlement payment? On January tenth, I received the following email from Councilmember Corral. "Thank you for attending last night's council meeting. During the meeting, you asked the following question. Are you now ready to tell citizens why a payout of one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars was provided to the former city manager Michael Reese upon his exit? And what legal costs were incurred in reaching this one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar settlement payment? I wanted to let you know that this matter has been settled. Please feel free to reach out to me if any of your questions or concerns that you may have." Councilmember Corral, you accurately represented the two questions I asked, but unfortunately, your response does not answer them. Could you please elaborate to tell us specifically how these two matters were settled? Thank you.
Any additional questions?
If you don't, if you don't mind.
Oh, yeah.
I wanna read you a quote, that is quote, it's a it'll take you back a little bit, but during the legal process, Maplewood staff and elected officials were appropriately advised against discussing the case or risking loss of insurance coverage during that time. E H O C and A C L U used that opportunity to exploit the city's silence by holding public meetings and disseminating information that was in some cases misleading or untruthful. So, that's a quote from our previous mayor when he was dealing with a similar situation of legal matters, so I just wanted to remind you of that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll try to find it, please. Multiple times like last year, questions were asked about the payment made to former city manager. And as you all know, have reminded us multiple times, transparency and accountability are the turnout of having sound, functional, local governance. But there are matters that municipal government, elected officials like us cannot disclose or discuss. And that is not because we do not want to share this information. That is not because I don't want to operate under the veil of secrecy. It's because there are legal constraints that exist and potentially dire consequences that come with disclosure and disbursement of that information. I wholeheartedly understand the desire and demand for clarity and openness. But what I ask of you is to understand that there are situations and scenarios where it is absolutely and without a doubt in the best interest of the city of Maplewood and its constituents that we withhold this information from the public.
Actually, I'll reiterate, I wasn't saying that in the nature to make you look bad or make that I was saying that in a clearance of understanding with what you were saying at that time. So if that was misinterpreted, that's fine. I did not mean that outside of you myself personally, very.
I am Elizabeth May, and so I live at seventy-three, oh, no. My name is Elizabeth May, and so I live at seventy-three, seventy-four Avenue. I'm sorry, I'm really upset. I am just really concerned with the comment of the previous mayor and the documentation that you were calling from has nothing to do with this issue. The issue is, you guys feel that it's not appropriate to divulge the information. That's fine, but it's not the same legal issue that you have before.
This would come to be on Zoom. All right, thank you. Mr. Traxler, item number eleven.
Announcements.
Okay, we got a couple of announcements, I'm gonna start with the super fun one, we have the coffee call coming up, three twenty-three. It's a really great event, if you haven't gone before, it's a great way to try a lot of local items, you know, some days in coffee in Maplewood. And you'll be very pecked up mood for the rest of the day. They are pretty, are kind of all kind of similar in that they have very much of a legislative impact. So, on two twenty-four, we're gonna have our coffee with mayor and council, and that'll be at the library at nine thirty in the morning. And then we have two open houses, open homes, open houses, yeah. To discuss Proposition S and Proposition J, we have the first one at seven P M on two twenty-nine and the second one at three P M on three five.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Traxler, item number twelve.
For will of January nine, twenty twenty-four, city council meeting minutes, closed session minutes.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Traxler, item number thirteen, please.
But, city council, the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to submit a request for the reallocation of block grant funds to the St. Louis County Office of Community Development.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution, second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Traxler, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bockingham. Yes, Councilmember Bockingham, yes. Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Holden.
Yes.
Mayor McNapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four dash one is approved.
Item number fourteen, please.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement on behalf of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, with the city of Brooklyn, Platoon, and Richmond Heights for the purpose of joining the Central Fire Training Center Commission.
Thank you, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution, second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have one question. I noticed in the memo that it lists that in spring of twenty twenty-three, Maplewood was invited to be part of this commission, and at the time, it declined. I do not recall that ever coming with our council, so I'm just curious if we could get some information on why that was never invited to council or how that decision was made.
I don't have access to documentation. I only have conversations that were shared with me with staff of other city managers. I can try to dig a little deeper to understand, but I don't at this time know why I'm able to shut it off, thanks.
Thank you.
I think this is a really good opportunity and really smart programs on the web that we're doing this now. All right, hearing no further discussion, Mr. Traxler, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bockingham, yes. Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Holden.
Yes.
Mayor McNapper.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Corral.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four dash two is approved.
Mr. Traxler, I just looked to see if you had one local race one. You ready?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Traxler, item number fifteen, please.
Resolution of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, appointing Mayor Whitcomb as the city representative to the Southern State Community Improvement District as director, replacing Michael Reese, the term expiring September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, along with an additional four-year term expiring September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-eight, and appointing Susan Russell as director, replacing Robert Lovebit, with the term expiring September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, along with an additional four-year term expiring September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-eight, and appointing Kurt Callis as director, replacing Chris Miltonberger, with the term expiring September twenty-sixth, pardon, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-sixth, and also appointing Richard Callis to an additional term expiring September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-eight.
Thank you, good job. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Traxler, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor McNapper.
Yes.
Councilmember May.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Corral.
Yes.
Councilmember Bockingham.
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four dash three is approved.
Thank you, item number sixteen, please.
Bill sixty-two forty-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, amending chapter two, article seven, boards, commissions, and authorities to add a new division for code of ethics for the purpose of establishing a code of ethics for appointed members of the board of commissions created by a code of ordinances.
That was the first reading, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance, second.
Any discussion?
I just wanna thank my colleague, Nick Holman, for helping me with that, that's why we got this forward, thank you.
Yeah, thank you both. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, Mr. Traxler, second reading, please.
Bill fifty-two forty-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, granting chapter two, article seven, boards, commissions, and authorities to add a new division code of ethics for the purpose of establishing a code of ethics for appointed members of the board and commission created by the code of ordinances.
That would be second reading, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, the third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Mr. Traxler, item number seventeen, please.
Bill sixty-two forty-two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute an S D P urban program agreement between the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in the city of Maplewood with project number S D P slash C N A Q nine-nine-oh-one-six-six-seven, for green and golden.
That was the first reading, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, Mr. Traxler, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-two forty-two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to execute an S D P urban program agreement between the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission in the city of Maplewood with project number S D P C N A Q nine-nine-oh-one-six-six-seven, for green and golden.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, the third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. Mr. Traxler, item number eighteen.
Bill sixty-two forty-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a condition of implement, assigned to Lovebeef Rebel Kitchen, operated restaurant to drive through at seventy-five twenty Manchester Road.
That was the first reading, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance, second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm so excited. I'm so excited. All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries, Mr. Traxler, second reading, please.
Bill, pardon, bill sixty-two forty-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a condition of implement, assigned to Lovebeef Rebel Kitchen, operated restaurant to drive through at seventy-five twenty Manchester Road.
Thank you, may I have a motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, the third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. All right, Mr. Traxler, item number nineteen, please.
Bill sixty-two forty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a condition of implement, Latimer Retai, VR Wholesale International LLC, operated auto sale and repair facility at twenty-eight hundred twenty-four South Big Ben Boulevard and seventy-four eighty-eight eleven.
Thank you, that was the first reading, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance, second.
Any discussion? All right, I just want to know that, and actually, Ms. Swetha Khan, you can provide additional information if you'd like, but I just wanna note to council that our city staff was, reached we had community members that reached out to city staff to let them know some concerns that they had. And because of that, Ms. Swetha Khan and staff went to that location and made sure that it would be addressed in a manner that fit what the community was asking for. And so, there's an update. There's an update in ordinance language since the package was prepared. So, appreciate you all, Mr. Traxler. Always appreciate you because you're responsible. So thank you for listening to P V as well as you, Swetha Khan. All right, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, Mr. Traxler, second reading, please.
Bill sixty-two forty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a condition of implement, Latimer Retai, VR Wholesale International LLC, operated auto sale and repair facility at twenty-eight hundred twenty-four South Big Ben Boulevard and seventy-four eighty-eight eleven.
Thank you, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, the third and final reading will take place at the next council meeting. All right, Mr. Traxler, item number twenty.
Old business.
Item number twenty-one, please.
Council communication.
All right, item number twenty-two, please.
Mayor's report.
Thank you. Now first, Happy Black History Month, Happy Lunar New Year here in the Year of the Dragon, and happy Valentine's Day tomorrow. Okay, put that out of the way. I am very excited to share with you all a opportunity that I thought of with an M R H high school student. The high school student's name is Abraham Blue, and he is a phenomenal gentleman. He is in his senior year, and he reached out to me and asked if there were internship opportunities with me and council. And I told him, absolutely. And then, he asked me, like, hey, and I thought, that's a great question to ask, and I'm glad that he asked. And I said, no. And so, what I pitched to him was an opportunity for him to go through the process of making a request to council to ask that we look into our budget and see if we can allocate some money to pay interns, especially from our high school. And so, I am going to reach out with him and also talk with Ms. Swetha Khan to see what we can do to kind of help him through that process. But essentially, I'd like to give him an opportunity to see research on policy, look at a budget, figure out how much an intern would need, how long internship would be, and then go from there. So he's in his senior year. Excuse me, I'm not sure how much interest he would have, you know, going into his freshman year of college. But as of right now, I think that this would be really good for him to experience, to put that on his resume. And he would be establishing a program or helping us to establish a program for students that come by. So, I hope that you all, if you have time, he reaches out to you to chat with you about his project, that you are able to give him some information and some encouragement. All right, so that is Mr. Blue. Excuse me, and then, I appreciate Councilmember Garcia giving us all new information about open houses for the property and property S, as well as talking with the mayor, we've been trying to be talking with the mayor and council for a while. I will be here, so I'm glad that we're able to finally get that done. And then, two things, two other things, actually, three other things I want to share with you all. All right, so, I have let you all know that I have been talking with developers about creating housing for elders in our community, housing that is affordable to them. I also let you know that I talked with the capitol charities and was able to have a great conversation with them in January about the parish, in that relationship section, parish, and what they could do with that. And so, I finally pitched to them, excuse me, turning some of that land into housing for senior citizens. And they said, yes, we will actually look into that as a good idea. Oh, I'm so excited, I'm so excited. So, if, yes, thank you so much. Yes, so the developer that I have been talking with, his name is Chad Hardl. Chad Hardl and his representatives of capitol charity are going to be at our next meeting on February twenty-seventh to provide a presentation to us about what they are trying to do. The developer, Chad Hardl, focuses solely on creating housing that is affordable to families and seniors, and also people with special needs. Excuse me, and then, capitol charities is also going to just speak with us, letting us know that they see the need for housing that is affordable for people in our community, and we are now starting to get into that area of that is housing, they wanna make sure that people have a place to lay their head as well. So, February twenty-seventh, our next council meeting, they'll be here to provide a presentation on that. Then, I also wanna just give you all an update, so if you all recall, I am a part of the Mayor's for Guaranteed Basic Income. Excuse me, and there are only two mayors in the state of Missouri that are a part of this, and it's Mayor Tashara Jones and then myself. I met with representatives of the St. Louis City Treasurer's Office on last week, and they are really, they have really exciting ideas about creating a program that lifts children out of poverty. Essentially, the guaranteed basic income purpose is to ensure that no child is in poverty. And so, we are very close to having the five oh one C three established, that Maplewood Community Growth Fund. When that is established, I'm in talks with the capitol charities to see if they will partner with the Maplewood Community Growth Fund and the Human Services Commission to have a pilot program to provide guaranteed basic income to Maplewood Richmond Heights families. So, we're still, was really waiting for us to get the five oh one C three, because once we can do that, that's when we can hit the ground running. But that was, that was delayed until our former interim city manager pushed that forward, Chief Meyer. So, appreciate him for that, but I just wanna let you know that conversation is being had, and the Human Services Commission also, the Human Services Commission, the ordinance that created that commission is based on an ordinance that is from Columbia, Missouri. So, excuse me, they actually are the first city to have a human services commission. And as, as it stands right now, that ordinance really focuses on data collection. But I went to the Human Services, our Human Services Commission when they met earlier this month, and I just told them, like, although we, we mirrored what one of you did, we don't have to stay with that. It's an ordinance, and so you have been on this commission for at least a year, I think they're going on to two, maybe two years, two years, I think. And so, if you see that there are things in our community that we need to address as far as Maplewood is concerned, and that's not being done in the ordinance as it stands, then let us know. Come to council, let us know, hey, we really think that this should be added, or hey, we're not doing anything with this part of the order. Because ordinances should work for our community. And finally, I just heard some cool news today that I wanted to tell you now. I had a call from the White House, I was invited to the White House to participate in a community discussion, and I'm very excited, I was invited in my capacity to be mayor. So, Maplewood is being huge, okay, like, eighty-one hundred folks. And the mayor gets invited to the White House, so I will be at the White House, which you represent us, and I'll represent as well. Excited. Thank you so much, and thank you, congratulations to the city, like, we are really doing good things, that included front of court. Thank you, Mr. Traxler. All right.
Item number twenty-four.
Getting a manager's report. Okay, yeah, twenty-three. But yeah, it is your report.
No, no.
No, no. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Now, I'm from Port City, manager. Mayor and council, I'd like to draw your attention to what you've considered that I have proposed in my memo. We are making some changes toward our conference this year, including updating five-year launch. So that we're not just looking at what our expenses and revenue might be in the year ahead, but for the next five years. We need to do this in order to sustain and commit ourselves on a more responsible basis to our goals as a city. This is best practice. I'd like us to apply best practice here in speak to how. The schedule is also adjusted a little bit in terms of condensing our work sessions into consecutive nights. Instead of spacing them out going all night, so thank you all for coming to see that on that. So that will be essentially a a week of intense work, but we'll, we'll split the departments up over those three nights. Okay, we'll, we'll have food. It'll, it'll be great. See, you say this, you say this with the will have food. Thank you very much. That is my call. Yeah, just want to treat. That allows us to really do our job more efficiently. There are no gaps in memory. It would be non-sessional, but anyways, we're excited. And it allows us to have our final readings in there so that staff can implement and be ready for your end management. Thank you for agreeing to that adjusted schedule. I also wanted to bring your attention to the ordinance commission report schedule that we have for this year. I will note that we do not have the Maplewood Community Growth Fund on here. I still need to dispatch with them when we feel like that, you know, appropriate time for them to make a report. Obviously, not according to commission, they are in five months. But I think having them on a regular basis and we'll be, since you all did appoint these members, makes sense. So it's an opportunity to add them to the report schedule. The St. Louis County Housing Report that you requested at the work session back in January will come to you in two weeks on twenty seventh. With Chief Nider, we've done a lot of analysis and work with reports, staff to make some recommendations and adjustments to our, to our housing process to ensure that we can lower the count that we are sending to county. This is obviously having a significant impact on our budget. And I will foreshadow for you that there are some difficulties that can't be overcome in short term around housing, obviously, because we do not have our own processing, having facility, given state. So we'll, we'll be kind of hold with a memo recommendation. And I think you have seen the honesty days that we scheduled, that we already started. We'll have more at that next meeting. I wanted to also make you aware that we are working on scheduling our next Business Watch meeting for our local businesses to help them deter crime and help our city police forge closer relationships with them so that we can be doing more proactively to deter crime in our neighborhoods. We typically were doing this twice a year. We're going to add another session this year due to some increases in activity in our community. We would want to demonstrate our productivity and also hear from our business owners about what more we can be doing as a city to support them. And finally, I will note the social services report that you have packet as well as the request contract. This reports and updates and stuff, so it is. Mr. Trackslar, item number twenty five.
Public forum.
At this time, the public is invited to provide a comment. Please step to me for you. If you are joining us during the chambers, please raise your hand if you are joining us via Zoom.
My name is Mary Reed Burger. I reside in seventy three oh three, right afternoon. I'd like to address a couple of things that were said tonight. First of all, Mr. Coriol was correct in quoting me on a matter that was in front of the court at the time. As soon as that was resolved, all those facts and figures and all the information was made public. So I don't know, unless you guys are telling me that it's not resolved yet, you have the matter of the hundred thirty one thousand dollars, then that's an invalid assertion. I also find it curious that the, you know, that you use the public forum. I was told by the mayor that you don't respond during public forum. You do have council communication with which to do that. You have the mayor's report with which to, you know, communicate the thousand answered questions. And I just found it curious that it would be done during the public forum. But the most curious thing to me was Mr. Holman's comment with regards to not disclosing information because it's not in the best interest of the city. And so what you're saying is that this council determines what's in the best interest of the city in terms of what now it becomes public? You know, that's the way I interpreted what you said. And, you know, there's something called sunshine law, and there's a responsibility that has bears with regards to resolving these issues and, and communicating how those matters would resound. And so, you know, it just seems to me that stating that the it wasn't in the best interest of the city, and that's why it's not disclosed. And you're welcome to, to address that because I might not have heard you correctly, but that's what I thought I heard. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Mr. Trackslar, item number twenty seven. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We are adjourned.